Roll call, Ms. Edwards.
Trustee Ma'am.
Yes.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
Okay. That passes three, twenty-one dash zero three zero, passes three zero. Alright. Twenty-one dash zero three one. This is, uh... A transfer of four thousand dollars. Uh... Transfer of four thousand dollars to be broken down to, in the following, two thousand to contracted services burial open and close. A thousand to two oh four one four ten three sixty zero six zero two. And then, which is, uh, tree work. And then there was an additional... Thousand... To be transferred to repairs, fund code two oh four one dash four ten... Three two three zero 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 zero. I move to adopt twenty-one dash zero three one.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Man. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee Ma'am?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Okay, twenty-one dash zero three one, passes three oh. Okay, next up. Resolution number twenty-one dash zero three two. Uh, this is the resolution to, uh... Fund the audit fee bill coming up, and this is to take three thousand dollars from the pay-as-you throw program... And, uh... Apply it to the audit fee account. I move to adopt resolution twenty-one dash zero three two.
Second.
Did somebody say something?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee Ma'am?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution twenty-one dash zero three two passes unanimously. Okay.
Trustee? Go ahead. I wanted to make a comment that I got the current appropriation numbers, um, twisted around. Um... You want me to go ahead and say that resolution for you?
You've got the, uh, if you've got the from and to, if you want to read that into the record. Is this for twenty-one oh three two, or are we going on to the next one?
Oh, three three.
Okay. Alright, resolution, let me set this up a little bit.
Okay.
Me, resolution twenty-one dash zero three three. This is to fund the teledoc line item to match the budget. Ms. Edwards, do you want to read into the rec, or the line?
Okay. That's line item two one 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 dash two 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 oh dash two... Two nine, line dash one four one, which is the teledoc line data. The current efficient is seven hundred and seventy percent, and we want our budget to be three thou. Okay. It's... It... It... Uh, our budget to be three thousand. Let me...
Shit.
Resolution twenty-one dash zero three...
This meeting is being recorded. Is it still, is it, did you hear us, Trustee McLaughlin?
They know about appropriations resolution.
I lost my internet connection there for a minute.
You want us to say it again?
Please.
This was, uh, resolution twenty-one dash zero three three. It was to match up the funding for a teledoc.
Okay.
Uh, to get it in line for our budget, this is the resolution, a thousand two hundred and thirty, going to two different accounts.
Okay.
Okay, how do you vote?
Yes.
Is that a, yes?
Yes.
Okay, we've got, uh, three oh on twenty-one dash zero three three. That concludes resolutions. Okay, uh, departmental reports. We don't have reports for tonight, however, we do have Captain Flag here at the meeting. If anybody in the meeting has concerns for Captain Flag, that is why he logged into the meeting. Please feel free to address him directly. Captain Flag, you have the floor.
I don't have really anything to add unless somebody has anything in particular. Um, I, I did receive a couple of community concerns via email this morning that I've responded to, but, uh... Essentially based on, uh, some traffic complaints in the area of Route Four and, uh... Dayton Liberty and Liskem and Dayton Liberty. And then we had a complaint about some grass clippings in the roadways. Um, I know we've been addressing those as we see them, and obviously those are a significant danger, especially for motorcycles, um, that are traveling through the area, so... We will address those as we run across them. If anybody sees those and has a complaint, feel free to direct it to us. Um... As I responded to the citizen concern earlier, we are working with, uh, OSP, Trovewood PD and Dayton PD to, uh, put together a... A traffic initiative for Montgomery County, um, this... Driving patterns that folks are witnessing with the reckless operations and the blowing traffic signals and stop signs is something that's, uh... Countywide, if not, uh, nationwide, coming out of the pandemic, so we are putting together, uh, a response to that that will, uh, include increased traffic enforcement for those offenders.
Thank you. Does any of the residents like to address Captain Flag? Go ahead.
Hi, this is Sheila Beck, seventeen hundred Alamo Court. Hi, Captain Flag, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
I'm doing good. Thanks for getting back with me about the car on Bell Court. Um, I just have a quick question. Um, I, I noticed you said something, you, uh, said, uh... Made a statement about, uh, being contacted, uh, regarding the grass being blown into the street. Now, how, how, how is that reported, um, to you? How do you, you, do we just... Can you give me like the address, or how does that?
Probably the best bet is to, uh, uh, go ahead and make that call to dispatch as you see it and report the address or... The block of a, a street where you've seen the, uh, grass blown into the street, and that way we can go out and check it and try to track it down and make contact with whoever did it. The, you know, the, the, the only thing about waiting and, you know, sending an email or something like that is, is it... It's not so bad for cars, but for the motorcycles at this time of year, it is a significant hazard. We worked a, uh, motorcycle fatality infirmary in Route Four a few years ago that resulted in a, uh, uh, you, you know, like I said, a fatality from a motorcycle that hit just that. It was a, a patch of grass that had been blown into the intersection, so, uh, there is a timeliness to it that, uh... You know, probably the best bet is to make that call to dispatch so we can get a car out there to look at it.
Oh, okay. That's fine, um, I'll be sure to do that. So are you guys, like, giving out tickets, warnings? Or does it go to, do you have to, like, catch the, um... Person that's cutting the grass, or does it go to the, uh, that homeowner's address?
So it, it would have to go to a individual, um, and what it actually is would be a, uh, uh... Somewhere between littering and depositing a harmful, uh, debris on the roadway, so it would be, um, a citation of sorts. But, uh, you, you know, even if we can't get somebody in the act of doing it to issue a citation, we are going to make... Contact with the suspect residence and ask that it be removed from the roadway.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay, any other residents would like to address Captain Flag?
Linda Rowley. Captain Flag, I wanted to say thank you. I hear you guys are gonna protect us at fair this year, and that...
We will be there.
That really means a lot to us and the kids, because when your people are on the grounds, it just makes a... Sense of calm, and it really, the kids really look up to your officers. And they always, they always do a really, really good job promoting the kids and just being there for them. And I really want to say thank you.
We definitely appreciate it, and, uh, you know, we look forward to being there every year and, uh, uh, hope to, you know, maintain that calm and... That atmosphere we've come to know and love.
Okay, any other residents, would they like to address Captain Flag? Alright, Captain Flag, thanks for, uh, logging into the meeting tonight, even though you didn't need to be here.
No problem, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we're up comments by citizens. Please, uh, read your name and address into the record before you begin, and you have three minutes. Would anybody like to address the board of trustees?
Hello, um, this is Sheila Beck, seventeen hundred Alamo Court. I just have a question. Um... Uh, you all, um, Steve talked about, um, transferring money, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, because I might have heard it wrong... From the storm water management, um... Area, is that correct? I think it was like a thousand dollars to transfer, uh, money out of there, that area, is that correct? Hello?
That sounds correct to me.
Okay, so, so here's my question. I didn't hear how much was in the storm water management fund. I heard the amount that was going to be transferred, but not the amount that's actually in there.
I can answer that question. Trustee, you can do it. It's under line item one thousand, one nine zero... Three six zero, zero one oh five. Home contracted services storm water program. We have one, uh, fee a year. They sometimes collect it once, sometimes they collect it in a split year. Uh, we allocated thirteen thousand for that account. Our fee this year was ten thousand, and we have a three thousand dollar unencumbered ballot. Outside of the renewal application that I'm working on right now with the Ohio EPA, which is less than a thousand dollars. Uh, it might be even less than five hundred dollars this year, we won't know that for a little bit. There's no other expenses that come out of the storm water, uh, account for the rest of the year.
Okay, so, so then, my second question, and then I, I'll be done, and thank you for that response. Uh, the second question is, I know I've been talking about our storm drains are falling in, and I talked with you, Steve, about, um... Repairing those, and, uh, your statement was to help you find the money to repair the storm drains. Well, if we have money in this account, why aren't we at least fixing one or how many ever we can... At least fixing or repairing them? Can you, can you explain that to me?
You're, okay, first of all, you can't mix funds together, so when the trustees allocate the monies to each of these accounts... And this is a general fund account. In order for it to be spent to fix the road or a road apparatus, they would have to do a transfer from the general fund to the road fund. This money was not. It was allocated for the expenses to manage the storm water district. Not the catch basins and the system. That's not what that money by law is allowed to be used for. It can only pay for your storm water fees, your storm water MS four permit. And in this case, the, if the, the money was transferred because of the manager that's going to, to have some involvement in the zoning that involves... Um, storm water. Your question comes out of the road funds, and it's a matter of planning. And as I asked the trustees at the first of the year, uh, and last year, to give us list of roads that need fixed, I never received a list of those roads. That could include one storm sewer, like you said, and it should. But we have to allocate that money for those projects. Out, out of road funds, so this money cannot be mixed in with that money.
Okay, so, so like, when you said about the, like, say for instance, when you talked about the trees falling at the cemeteries... And how important it was to get those trees cut down, uh, because somebody might get hurt. Well, the same situation with these drains, except for kids play on these things. So I'm just, I'm just putting this out there so the trustees understand that repairing these drain, sewer drains... Is just as important as any other, uh, hazard that's going on out here, and I've been asking about this for a while now, and I haven't, like... Um, um, so I, I'll just continue addressing this issue until we start getting some of that done, so, uh, and Mr. Man, um... There were, did you have any reports on any grass that needed to be cut, or however that goes, because that house over there on Derby Road... The neighbor next door is cutting the, it, it's caving in, I don't have the address, but it's, it's a, oh, nobody's lived there, it, the house is caving in, so... Hopefully you guys understand which house. I can get you the address if needed. But the front yard, the neighbor next door cuts it, because she says the road department doesn't get to it, uh, in a timely manner. But the backyard and the trees are, they're starting to cover the whole house. So is, i- is, is, is somebody, uh, or not just Mr. Man, I'm just putting this out to all you all... Um, is somebody addressing that issue, because that lady, uh, the neighbor that's cutting the grass said... That all kind of animals are in that backyard, and they're creeping over into her yard. She did her best cutting the front, but she just is not able to do the back, which she should not have to be.
What's the address under?
What I'll do is, Mr. Man, I'll, 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 I'll call you with that address. Um, um, but that house has been vacant for years now.
Okay.
Uh, it's between, it's, uh, between, um, Hopewell and, uh, Blairwood, but I'll, I'll get with you with the address, or... Whoever I'm supposed to get with, I don't know who I'm supposed to call about that.
Oh, thanks, I'll look it right first.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so before we go on, Mr. Wolf, you made the comment that, um, you're working on the renewal of the MS four permit. Um, number one, do you have an E-Biz account to do that? Number two, why, you have an E-Biz account?
Yes.
Oh, good.
I had it last year to do the, the thing last year.
Okay, so then, the other two question is, uh, why did we, why did our expense to, uh, soil and water go from thirteen to ten thousand? And why are they not, why are they not doing that permit renewal? Why, we're paying them ten thousand dollars, why are they not doing that permit renewal for us?
Because the Ohio EPA manager today told me that they are not permitted to file the EPA permit in, 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 for government entity, and it must be done for us. Now, they are preparing and have prepared our entire report, but it's up to the government entity, not a private business, a government entity, to have to submit... Directly through E-Biz as the public entity.
That is true.
And that was verified by the Ohio EPA today.
That, that is true, I just checked to see if you knew what you were talking about.
Okay, any other residents wish to address the trustees?
Linda Rowley, two four six South Diamond Mill. Um... Several meetings ago, we were talking about doing the RFP for the fire truck and actually getting it moving. It's been over a month, and I was wondering, Mr. Man, where this stands. Um... And who is... Writing, I thought the specs were already written, because they said that you would attach them to the resolution that night. But I got to the party late, and Bruce was just filling me in, and he said that the specs aren't written yet. So, I mean, we're a month past where we were that time, and what, what's the latest on it?
Um, I'm gonna refer this to Mr. Wolf. He could give a better answer. Uh... Mr. Wolf, can you tell us how long you anticipate this is gonna be?
Linda, under old business, we discuss the RFP, and it's supposed to be, we're supposed to have an RFP to vote on at the first meeting in July. So earlier in the meeting, um, that's my understanding of what's supposed to happen.
Okay, my question was about the specs. Um, Bruce told me that you guys were talking about the specs being written. I thought those were supposed to be attached... To the resolution from a meeting, if we had minutes, I could tell you what meeting it was, but since we don't have any, it's just a month or so ago.
Mr. President, can we let Mr. Wolf answer the question?
Okay, so, to address the, the, uh, entire attendees, um, and, and, uh, Linda, to update you. That resolution was tabled by the trustees, and, um, the trustees were asked to submit their ideas... Or things that they wanted to have included in an RFP. And the fire chief received a, uh, a, a submission from Mr. McLaughlin. And they have a, a lot of the different submissions that was done under the bloods. Um, and, 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 and so they went to a generic spec that's being written. That was the next step after the trustees handed in what they thought needed to go on to the apparatus... Or be included in the brakes and the, and the motor size and all those things. Um, and so the next step was that the committee would take all those numbers and, and suggestions and wants, and they would work as a committee... To create a spec. Once that committee is done with the specs, then the RFP will be brought back in front of the trustees... To, to vote on it new, because it's been more than one meeting since the table. So the resolution that's tabled goes away under Robert's rule of order. A new resolution to do an RFP will be put, uh, in front of the trustees with, with the specs, a pass. And then it's up to the trustees to decide if they're going to vote to move forward or don't mo- move forward. But I am not able to do anything with the RFP until the committee is done with the specs, which I have nothing to do with.
Okay, who is on the committee?
Thank you.
That was asked in the work session.
I was, I got to the party late.
I know the fire chief is on it, uh, Mr. Man is on it, because they met last week. Um, and I know that there's other firefighters on it, but it was a committee...
Are they firefighters from Jefferson Township, or are they firefighters from another township?
No, 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 they, they're strictly employees of Jefferson Township now. The city of Dayton offered their help because they buy so many fire apparatus, so the city of Dayton allowed a firefighter that is a head of their apparatus committee to assist... This committee. But they are not making any decisions. They just have the template, which is about ninety-nine to maybe as high as a hundred and one pages, which is a professional spec. Uh, before this time, when the table was, when it was tabled, they didn't have any specs written at all. So this is a professional spec that the committee is creating. And when it's done, it'll be put in front of the trustees for their discussion, review, and either approval or disapproval. If it's approved, then it could go to an RFP. But it's being managed by the fire chief, the committee is ma- being managed by the fire chief.
Okay, is the assist, is the, so you're saying it's Mr. Man, the fire, is the assistant chief on this committee?
I don't think so.
Linda, I, I thought I could get a quick answer, uh, answered, uh, here for you, but I'm gonna... Alright, I'm gonna... Do you want my answer or not?
I do, I've not said a word, I'm not the one laughing, sir.
I'm gonna say that, that the next meeting...
That's what you all, I am so frustrated.
Hey, hey, I, I can't, I, I'm, I'm on a committee, and these gotta be certain specs, you gotta look at...
I understand that, for, okay, I understand that, but you always say I'll get back to you, and you have not one time called me back. We met with you, and you said, "I'll get back to you on that." I called you back, you never have gotten back with me, you have never called me back, sir. I don't.
The changes, the changes are being put in to the system so it'll be ready for this next meeting.
Does anybody else want to address the board of trustees?
I'm sorry, can I just, real quick?
Sheila, you've already spoken, and you spoke almost seven minutes this last one.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out what Chief Wright was, he did, he was, he said he wanted twenty-five minutes, so that's all.
Okay, any other comments by citizens? Okay, trustee reports, Mr. McLaughlin.
I'm on the bottom of the list, I'll go last.
Trustee reports, Mr. McLaughlin.
I'm on the bottom of the list, I'll go last. I'm not muted, am I? No, I'm not muted.
Mr. Man, trustee report.
I don't have a report.
Yeah, I don't have a report tonight, so we're back to you, Mr. McLaughlin.
Well, thank you very much, um... So, I presume we still have no, nobody to spray anything? Do we even think, we have any guys spraying, do we have anybody to spray anything yet in the road department?
No, sir.
Okay, so, um, I'm almost done with my first cutting, I'll, um, step out and, um, get the spraying caught up in the township. And, um... Still just worried about the money, amount of money, you know, you hear the budget, the amount of money we're spending. We hire new guys, and I'm just worried about the money. We, we'll hire new guys, and, 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 in the, in that process, it won't cost any more money, it's gonna cost us less. And then, as time goes on, it costs us more. We hire a guy, you know, part-time, and then it just, things, and the amount of people we have in the road department, it just scares me. So, uh, we need to watch our, watch our money, that's all I got.
Okay, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Need a roll call to adjourn the meeting? Need a roll call to adjourn the meeting. Mr. McLaughlin?
Present.
That's a yes or a no?
Uh, yeah, uh, yes, I would, I I seconded it. Yeah, yes.
Okay, Mr. Man?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. We are adjourned at eight forty seven P M.